I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Oops. Our call of attendance?
Done. Thank you.
Approval of the agenda. Anyone?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Stacy, seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Kevin, seconded by Stacy. I have two comments on the consent agenda for discussion. First, I'd like to acknowledge that we have moved our monthly meeting minutes to the consent agenda. Historically, we have approved those as a separate business item, but we have established a new process. Laura's been very good about sending these minutes to the chair, vice chair, and superintendent ahead of time. We've had no discussion on them for over a year. So in order to streamline the evenings, we have moved those to consent agenda. But if board members ever have things on the minutes they'd like to discuss, we just need to pull those off the consent agenda and we can discuss them as we would if they weren't on the consent agenda. But on the nights we have no discussion on, they just sort of move right through and it shortens our action items a little bit for us. The second item I like -- oh, any questions from board members about that or concerns?
No.
I know Barb shared that with you in board notes as well. So thank you for helping communication. The other thing is I'd like to recognize the four different -- well, the Minding Me Day Parent Teacher Organization and then the Class of 2026, their donations to the district. All these donations are going to the things the donors have asked us to spend that money on. So OH is getting new buddy benches and we have some field trips happening because of the kindness of our community. So thank you very much to those people who've made those donations. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There'll be no presentations or recognitions this month, and so Claire gets to be our first item. Claire's our new student representative. We've introduced her before and thank you for being here. You might want to tell everyone where you've been and why you're all wet.
I was at a swim meet. All right, I guess I'll begin. So at Wildwood this month, it was the first day of school on the third, same as every school. And then except for kindergarten, they start on the fifth. And the ninth through the 13th, they had AFAS testing for first and second grade. The 11th was picture day. 12th was curriculum night. And this week, there was COGAT testing for first grade and homecoming week. And then in October, there will be on the fourth, a PTO fun run. On the eighth, there is a kindergarten field trip to the fire station. On the 14th, there is kindergarten fall frolic. And the 16th, kindergarten also has a field trip to the apple orchard. And then at OH this month, first day of school. And then on the sixth, that was their picture day. The 19th was curriculum night. 21st, the OH choir sang the National Anthem at the Twins game. And then for the first part of the month, they had a fundraiser to donate spirit wear. And then coming up in October, tomorrow, there's a breakfast for new students. And the 30th through the -- the 30th of this month through the 3rd of October, the fifth graders will be at Warner Nature Center. And the 14th, there is another PTO fun run. And then the 16th is Nature Trail Day. And the 30th and 31st, 4th grade goes to a base camp field trip. And then at the middle school, they implemented a new rule where on Thursdays, they no technology in the lunchroom. And then they also participated in the clothing drive. And then their curriculum night was the 16th. And the 23rd was the start of a Step It Up fundraiser. And they also had spirit days this week. And then in October, on the 11th, day of the school dance. The high school, we had picture day and the first day of school, the same day, the third. And then this week, we had spirit week. And Monday was early flight day. Tuesday was decade day. Wednesday was United States day. And then Thursday was class color day. And tomorrow will be zephyr day. And then on the 27th, so tomorrow, the cross-country team will run the football to the game, which will also happen tomorrow night. And then on Saturday is the dance. And then in October, on the second, juniors were going to the college fair. And the sixth, there's a pink-out car wash to help raise money for the Randy Shaver Cancer Foundation, I think. And then the 11th is the pink-out game where we'll also raise money.
Wow, lots going on.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion and information items. And the item we have tonight is the board member calendar. So in your board packet, there's a calendar that Laura's put together. Are there any items people like to call out quickly? On Monday, October 14th, is the next District Curriculum Advisory Committee, and I'm the rep who usually does that, but my work schedule doesn't allow me to attend. So if someone's able to attend that on Monday, the 14th, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m., I think Lynn would appreciate that. Sorry, Lynn. I'm actually teaching class, so if someone can do that and let me and Lynn know, that'd be great. Or let me know and I'll pass it on to Lynn. Other than that, remember, we have a link in board notes all the time to the calendar events and things that we might want to attend in the district. And so be sure and check that through board notes.
May I call one out that on Thursday, October 24th, at 6:00 p.m. is when we will have our World's Best Workforce presentation for any community members who would like to attend that. So I'll just point that out as well.
All right, thanks. Action items. Approval of the solar power project. Balmanazi, welcome.
Included in your school board packet tonight, you will find a contract and subscription agreement for a solar project. The concept of participating in the solar energy agreement was introduced at the Joint Finance and Facilities Committee meeting back in June. And I just want to be clear, there was some question on this. The proposal before you is to subscribe to a solar garden project, and the district is not considering or would not be constructing or operating the garden. It's just subscribing to the solar garden. Additionally, it's estimated that the annual savings at 4 million kilowatt hours under the solar agreement would be approximately $28,000 per year, or approximately 7% of our electricity costs. There were a few questions from the study session in which we discussed this item earlier this month, and I'd like to just go over those if I could. And they are rather legal, so I'm going to be reading more than I usually do. So administration was asked a couple of questions. The first one about the school board's ability to exit from the agreement once approved and executed. So the district would not have unilateral right to terminate the contract for any reason at all. The contract does identify three circumstances where the district would have the right to terminate. In addition, we would have the right to sell our portion at any time should we not wish to continue. I think those three reasons were reviewed earlier this week, and I have them, if you're interested in reviewing them again. But short of these circumstances, the district would not have the right to walk away from the agreement without being exposed to financial risk. The second question was with regard to Excel Energy and their relationship with the project. It is not the case that Excel could walk away from the agreement and the district would need to continue to be obligated to purchase energy without the bill credits, right? So in other words, in the very unlikely event that Excel did exit the agreement, the contract would cease and the district would be out nothing financially. So those were sort of the two outstanding items from the study session. That's all the follow-up information I have. I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have tonight.
Remember, our last study session, we spent a lot of time discussing the solar project, and so we've had many of our questions answered at that point in time. But if there are new questions or things that we need to review, this would be a good time to do that.
Has it been on record what our potential savings could be? Because that might be good to lay that out.
Bill, do you have those numbers in front of you? Or I have them here?
It was between 20, 26,000 and 28,000 per year over a 25-year period. So quick math, we could get that.
Yes, yes. That's what I recall, but I just thought it'd be nice to have on the record.
Oh, absolutely. Great point.
680.
Seven percent. We would save seven percent off of our --
And it is in the packet for the study session. Am I right about that, Laura? We did have the table in the study session packet, so.
Which is online.
Which is online. So it is in the record on, in the previous.
Is it 688,000 or something like that? Almost 700,000 over the 25 years?
Is that a bracket?
Okay.
It's in the packet.
Okay. Okay.
So the presentation that was even to us is also in the board packet from the study session as well, for more information. I've pulled it up and the number is 679,000 at the end of year '25.
Thank you.
Yep. That's why you do it all electronically. Thank you, Patrick, for organizing it. And Laura?
We can do this.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, Kevin.
So, reading through the contract, which is lengthy and legal. The question I had was, should, and don't take this the wrong way, because I certainly don't have, I hope that never, never happens, but should, for some reason, a school district cease to exist, what then happens to our liability on fulfilling that obligation?
Let me answer the part that I do know, and then I may reference to Brian, who's here from IPS, to answer the part that I may not know. So at any time during the 25 years, if we close a building with 24-month notice, we are able to get out of the contract for that building, right? So if for some reason we close the district ed center, which we have no plans to do within the 25-year period, given 24 months' notice, they would pull that back off of our contract. Now, in terms of closing the district altogether, I would assume the same.
Safe case.
Right. So we'd be closing the building in a sense.
I'm sorry. I thought that I read that you had to transfer it to a different building within the district.
You're able to.
Oh, but you're not required to.
And you want to retain that subscription and move it to a different facility?
Okay, so it's optional.
Can you come, can you come to the mic so it's on camera? Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, so you've always got the option to retain it and transfer it to another district-owned facility. The other option is to, you know, with 24 months' notice, cancel it altogether. And that would be, you know, no obligation past that.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? So we've discussed the items. Can we have a motion on the item? So moved. Thank you. I'll second the item. So moved by Julie, seconded by Lucy. Any other discussion?
I just think that with Minnesota's pledge to be carbon-free energy source, within the next 30 years, I think it's a really responsible move by the board to take advantage of the opportunity.
I will confess, the 25-year period was hard. It's hard to see the future more than five years, let alone 25, to know where we may be. I would say the community has said time and time again that they support renewable energy. And I think we need to be responsive as the fiduciary stakeholders, the agents of this board, to be mindful of how we spend that money. And so I think, again, I confess being a little bit Johnny-come-lately on this, but I think the positives outweigh the negatives, and so I would support this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor to approve the contract for a solar power project, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. You're not going anywhere, are you, Bill?
Oh.
Next, we have the approval of the revised long-term maintenance, long-term facilities maintenance plan, the LTFM. All yours.
Thank you. So this agenda item really relates to the OHAD dehumidification project that we've been discussing this summer. And as you recall, at the study session on August 22nd, we made the decision not to complete the OHAD dehumidification project during the 1920 and 2021 fiscal years. So because the dehumidification project was on the long-term facilities maintenance budgets, we are required to revise our budget that we submit to MDE. And as a placeholder, we have moved the dehumidification project to the 2022-23, believe it or not, fiscal year, in order to coincide with the second tier of the voter-approved operating levy. And so doing that creates a change to our LTFM budget. We are required to submit an updated LTFM budget, but really, the change is just taking it off from 1920, 2021, and putting it on for 2022, 2023. Putting it on for 2022, 23 does not obligate us to do the project at that time. It's simply a placeholder for when we revisit that during the second tier of the operating levy, and the same fiscal disparities, advantages would occur at that time.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Small board tonight. We are a quorum, though. So discussion? I wanted to ask, Bill, so we've just removed it, so we've left some funds in the, funds, those funds haven't been allocated to another project, or have we pulled another project forward to do in its place?
Not for, if memory serves, not for 100% of what was in the budget. We did have a placeholder for some windows, and I do believe we've put that back, but not for 100% of the placeholder.
Okay. So that money will roll over, then we'll keep that long-term facility maintenance, so there's no impact to the overall budget. We're not losing money by pushing it off and not doing it now.
Exactly. And thanks for clarifying. Long-term facilities maintenance revenue and expenditures is a restricted category, and the revenue and expenditures is separate, although it's under the general fund umbrella, a separate category of funding, just like the capital projects levy or operating capital. And because it's a separate category of funding, it has its own fund balance. In some years, we will overspend our allocation. In some years, we will underspend, just that overall, we're able to maintain a balanced fund balance in that, and we are.
Wonderful. Thank you. Other questions about the change?
I have one question.
Yeah.
So as we look at this, we have all of our buildings then will be air-conditioned, dehumidified, correct? After, after OH?
Yeah, if it's approved in 2022.
Yes.
Okay. So would we, and this is just a far-out question, don't get, don't get mad at me for asking, but is there a long-term plan, you think, to put dehumidification in the high school gym?
And I paused after I said yes, because buildings, I'm talking about classroom space after that time, but no, you're right. The gym does not have air conditioning, dehumidification.
And it's been pretty miserable this, this fall.
And that would certainly be something to consider and vet through the lens of if that project is available under that, and I would think it would be. I haven't thought about it too much, but yeah, that would, that would certainly be something that we could talk about.
I mean, just as another one to put on the list to, if we're, if we're considering the air quality and the quality of the building, I would think that that would be something that might be helpful to at least have on our long-term vision.
Thanks for the recommendation.
Any other questions? All those in favor of motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill's up again. Yeah, look at that. Next item, approval of the preliminary 2019 payable 2020 levy certification.
So you can tell it's the beginning of the school year, because you kind of have all these spreadsheets from you and all of these different action items to take action on. And this is just another one in that line. And so this is another item that we discussed earlier at the finance committee meeting this evening, and it was also discussed at the school board study session earlier this month. And so as we know, school districts are required to certify their preliminary levies to the home county auditor and to the Department of Education each year by September 30th. The county, in our case, Washington, Washington County, then uses that information to turn around and distribute preliminary estimated tax statements, which go to our district taxpayers in November. And then finally, in December, in our case, on December 12th this year, we have our truth and taxation hearing whereby we will be recommending to certify the levy for taxes payable in 2020, district revenue in fiscal year 2021. And so this is just the first step in a line of steps here. So up on the screen and in your board packet, you have a very similar document to what you have seen at the study session. Essentially, what we're doing here is just comparing the certified levy for taxes payable in 2019 to the proposed levy in taxes payable in 2020. And you can see that there's quite a bit of information on this spreadsheet, but at the bottom right-hand corner, you can see that the total change year-over-year is less than a percent, at .82%. So you can see that the general fund is obviously the largest dollar amount, and the increase there is about 134,000. The community education fund has just a very small increase, about 13,000. The debt service fund, which is tied to our voter-approved principal and interest payments on our debt, actually is decreased by about 22,500. And then our OPEB debt service fund, just a very small decrease there of about 4,000. And so what we would do tonight is recommend that the board certifies the maximum preliminary levy. So school boards have the option to certify the maximum levy or a specific dollar amount. By certifying the maximum levy, we are open to small, any adjustments, but in all likelihood, very small adjustments from MDE between now and when we certify the final levy in December. By certifying a specific dollar amount, that amount then would not move both up or down between now and the truth and taxation presentation. So again, a small change year-over-year, a very minor change since we looked at line items in additional detail at the study session. And our recommendation tonight to you would be to certify the maximum preliminary levy for pay 20.
All right. Thank you, Bill, for the presentation. Have a motion? Do we have a discussion, please?
I'm moved, approval.
Moved, approval by Julie. Seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? As Bill said, we've seen this a number of times now at the study session and then just now at the facilities, or the finance meeting. So thank you, Bill, for continuing to bring it forward and keeping us updated. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. You're done. All right. Next one, approval of the e-learning days.
So this is something we talked about at our study session at length, and I do have a summary here in the packet for you with the points that we covered at that time. The reason we are talking about e-learning, just for those who are following at home, we had quite a few days last year where we had to call off school due to weather-related emergencies. And so we do have an opportunity. The legislature, legislature did amend the length of school year, hours of instruction statute, to include the option for a district to utilize e-learning days due to inclement weather for up to five days in one school year. And those e-learning days would be counted as an instructional day. So the purpose of an e-learning day would be able to, we would be able to count it as an instructional day and continue the learning for students. And though we don't have specific plans yet by building, that is one thing that we need to work on with our teachers, and by building exactly how it is, we will execute those. We are required to communicate with families at the beginning of the year to say, we are going to be pursuing this in the future. And so, so in some ways, it's a little backwards, because we're telling families, we're going to be doing this, and yet we can't give the exact specifics. But the overall general guidelines would be that this would be something where we would, on an inclement weather day, we would let, let families know that this would be an e-learning day, and then within a certain amount of time, that we'll, we'll make it really very specific. We'd have our teachers be able to post learning activities for students. It'll vary by grade level in terms of expectations and developmental levels, so those, those things will be accounted for as well. But our teachers will need time to plan for this, and so that is why we are, are not going to have specifics at this time. We also have things to work on, you know, just in general around how this will, how we will count attendance, for example, for this day. So there are some specifics that we need to, to work out. Also, students who don't have access, internet access, our special education students, there will be different plans for those students as well. So there are a number of details that we need to work out on this. And so, but at the very least, we need to be able to talk about it and let families know that this is something that we're talking about doing. We're recommending five days, up to five days, just so that we have some flexibility. And we'll give you some feedback from districts that did this last year. They did say that there became some e-learning fatigue, and they did not use all the days that they could have used, because it got tiring for the families at home when we had that five days in a row. So there are things that we are going to consider as we move this forward, including getting feedback from students and parents on, on how we do this. So I'd want you to know that as well. And then I, I do want to just highlight that this is an opportunity for our students as well. You know, we're, we're becoming increasingly mobile in the way we do our work. And so the idea that students would also have those skills that they get to practice that say, you know, you're not able to be physically in school, but that doesn't mean the learning stops, and it doesn't mean that we have to be together to be learning. One of our things that we're talking about as a strategic plan is to have students be able to be agents of their learning, to be able to know how to organize their time and to be able to drive that learning. And so the, all these things are opportunities for our students. And they're in a no-risk sort of situation, because we'll be all together, learning this together and practicing and learning how to get this right, so then when they leave us, they have some skills that they might not otherwise have had, had we not given them these opportunities to try and make mistakes and figure it out together. So there's a lot of benefit to this, this opportunity. And so we are recommending that we take advantage of this and ask that you approve up to five days in one school year, knowing that we might not use them all and that we will be responsive to how, how the feedback we get as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Have a motion? So moved. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Kevin. Conversation, discussion?
I just think that this is presented really well, thought through, and I think that people expect this to happen. I think it's a great idea.
I think this is a great option compared to losing a staff development day for our teachers and our students who are expecting a day off like we did last year, or adding days on in June. It's just not an option for us, and it's not what's best for learning, and this is more responsive to our student needs and learning. So I really appreciate the time that's gone into this.
So the, the idea is it can only be inclement weather.
Right.
That would trigger this.
Right. Right. This would be, because, I mean, the other part of this is that this is a better option than having kids on the road, right? So when we have this opportunity because of inclement weather. It's, it does not take the place, I'd want to be really clear about this, this is not the kind of thing that takes the place of students being with teachers or students being with their peers. It's, it's when we have no other option and we can't have students come in. So, because it does not replace the experience we can have in the classroom. It is very different, but it is a better option than, than being on the road or having to add things on. So I'd want to be really clear about that, too.
And Kevin, you missed the study session, but there was one other opportunity that Barb saw to use this. Do you, do you care to mention that?
Oh, yeah. Well, so as, so in this, so the big picture on this one is that if we, if we do have this, these e-learning days, we will have some flexibility in our calendar in terms of our hours. So one of the things that we have, that we would like to do at the high school is to be able to have all our juniors be able to take the ACT and not have other students in the building. So when we give the ACT, we have had some difficulties managing that when everybody else is there and making that a really favorable test environment. So by having this flexibility, by using e-learning days, and we capture those days we might otherwise not have had, or those hours we might not otherwise have had because of canceling school. And that allows us to have some flexibility within the high school schedule to be able to have just juniors report. Then what we do, we started talking about, and I think the high school staff will, will talk more, this is really. talk more, this is really something that I think they'll be much more creative on than we would be sitting at the table. But what, what kinds of opportunities, how can we think of things differently for those students that are not in school? And what might opportunities be, there be, what might there be for those students to do that allows a different learning experience for them when they're not in school? And so there are opportunities for our strategic plan to have those kinds of conversations, again, because not all learning happens in school and, and learning is anytime, anywhere, and there might be some opportunities that we grab there, too, based on what our, our teachers see as, as those opportunities, so.
Although that's similar in nature, it's not what we're voting on right now because that doesn't mean, okay, that's just information.
That is just a little add-on and a benefit that comes with the name.
But you said the only thing that triggered was a snow day and it may be something else at some point.
The only way we can count it as instructional hours is for the inclement weather.
Right.
It doesn't mean that, okay, so that, I mean, it doesn't mean that a teacher might not say, hey, here's an opportunity for us to do things differently, and they may have some creative things that come out of this. But in terms of the instructional day and, and the number of hours we can count, it's, it's for inclement weather.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to committee reports. AMSD.
So that's me. So our most recent AMSD meeting, we heard from Bill Morris from the Morris Leatherman Group, and they talked about, they went through their survey results. They've, they've taken a number of surveys throughout the state and, and kind of went over some big picture information about trends in terms of politics, in terms of what they are hearing about schools. And, and so that's, that, I, I did look, I don't see it posted to AMSD right now, but I'll, I'll look into that and so I can share that with you so that you can see on the PowerPoint. I will say that whenever, seeing the PowerPoint is not as, as great as hearing Bill Morris talk about it because he gives a lot of context, but I can share that with you. The other part of AMSD that I think is pretty excited is, as, we are, we are part of, of a group that is organizing a student, excuse me, a student, a student conference. And this will be a conference where students, we'll have students from all over the metro area come together and share their perspectives on the future of public education and what will that look like, what will an integrated, equitable, and excellent education look like for all kids? And it'll come from the students. And so we have started talking to teachers at the high school in particular about recruiting some students to participate in that, who, in that, who might have a really strong opinion on what that could look like for, for kids in the future. And it's a really, an excellent opportunity for student voice. And so, so we're excited about that and we'll get more, as the, as it comes together, we'll get more information.
That's great. I saw that on the website, I wasn't sure if we'd be able to participate, so I'm really glad.
We are, we have plans to participate, so that will happen.
Kevin?
Question on AMSD. I see on a calendar of events Mike is listed for, something coming up, and is he still on that or do you get an alternate?
Barb did check with Mike, remember, with his job search, she had two pieces with AMSD. He had the legislative committee and he had the regular meetings. The legislative piece this summer was difficult for him, so we were supporting him. But now he has said that he is able to attend the, the regular meetings on a monthly basis. But remember, those are also open to all board members and so oftentimes others go and Barb oftentimes brings additional staff, too. So they're great learning opportunities for all of us, but if Mike's not able to go, he just makes sure that someone's there. So, but he said it would work with his schedule. Okay. MAF. So usually Julie does the MAF report, but Julie let me attend MAF this last month. And so this is the first time I attended MAF, so thank you for sharing that with me. Quick summary, and Kevin, if I miss something, you'll, you'll jump in. I'm assured. So Tony Pierce came and gave an overview of the mental wellness work that's happening in the district, which is really great because a lot of that funding is coming from MAF. And so it's a nice update to them about how that was going. The usual things, they approved the Wild Artist Series budget reports, treasures reports, looked at the budget. Two other important things were, they did approve the Weekend Backpack Food Program. We have 85 students in our district participating in that program, so they did approve that to continue. And they continued to sponsor the Home-to-School Worker Connection piece. The Savior Party's coming up October 4th, and tickets are still available.
Tickets live.
And so if you're interested in that, I'm sure Kevin has tickets available, maybe even with him, for that. And they've done another, a number of other events for back to school, which I'm sure Barb will talk about the back to school thing, so I'll leave that for you. And?
And Morning with MAF.
And Morning with MAF, yes. Kevin, do you want to talk about this?
Sure, Ken. So this will be the second annual Morning with Mayor. And the, the idea is to try to have people come that maybe wouldn't come just any of some of our other events, trying to offer a slightly different perspective. And I think it's really a fun one because we really get the students to share what they're doing, all the excitement that's going on. It just, if you've not been to one, that's, most people in the audience are in schools all the time, but for anybody that hasn't been in our high school or hasn't been in our high school lately, I would really encourage you to come because the kind of stuff that's happening is amazing. And so there's free breakfast and registration is open, you can go online and do that. And it's a fun event, about an hour, we'll get you out by kind of seven to nine, seven 30 to nine, actually. We'll get you out by nine and there's some optional tours that will go from nine to nine 30 if you want to go back into some of the classrooms and see some things. Ken, what's happening?
Thank you.
Next item is the School Board Association, Minnesota School Board Association. And I guess Kevin and I attended the advocacy tour, is that Saturday?
Yeah.
On Saturday. And so I have one copy of the legislative book if anyone wants to see it, but it's also electronic. I know Julie likes to look at the paper, so she can start with that. It was a breakfast meeting and there were eight districts represented at the meeting, the superintendents and board members. We reviewed the political landscape and what's happening there. We looked at the policy issues that might return this next legislative session and then talked about highest priorities. We spent a lot of time, really good conversation about what we felt as individual representatives of boards, what we thought if there were to be extra funds at the legislation this year, how we would like MSBA to advocate for us. And so that was a very good conversation, I thought. Kevin, are there other pieces you'd like to share?
No, I think you got it. I was, I mentioned to the group that I thought it was a bit of a late turnout. And so it would be nice to see what we can do to, and I know it was Saturday morning and it was, what, 8:30 or something, or it was early, so. But it is our chance as school board members to get out and learn and advocate and do that. Other part of our job, which is to work with our elected legislature to advocate for kids. So it was, it was nice, it was a nice event. That survey was interesting to see where people landed on. I mean, it took, because they did this, what, how many times? 12 other times? 14? That's a lot. But every single cohort group sat money on the formula. That was the number one. You know, it's not that surprising, I guess, but it was good, good event.
All right. 916.
916. So the, 916 has been working on and has finally, for the most part, I think they've, they've landed on their finance director. We, it was difficult to get somebody, the 916 consortium is a difficult, school finance in itself is difficult. And they have something like 916, which is 14 members into one group, is even more complicated than the tuition billing and some of this other stuff that, that happens there. But a person has been offered a contract, he has accepted, and I think he may be even already on board. But then I think they had another person in that group leave, so they're now having to look for, for another person. But it sounds like that'll be a much easier, a much easier piece. Closed session, we worked on a bunch of parameters for contracts. And then 916 has a education foundation, as do we, and so they do similar things. And they have a golf tournament, which we don't have yet. They always ask me if I want to golf and it's like, you haven't seen me golf before. But it is, they do, they raise a lot of money for 916. And so we, as a school district, put in something for the foundation and we, as individual board members, can put in for the 916 foundation. I believe you probably got a mailing at home, maybe three weeks ago? That sound? Nope, I'm getting those looks like no. They told me, they told me they were out there. Well, I'll, I'll get Linda to send it out PDF to everybody. It's a, it's actually a very nice brochure. So I made a contribution when I was there. And so if anybody else, I know we've had that discussion before, if anybody else on this board wants to put in a little something for 916, it would be appreciated and you get listed if you put in, I think it's more than $30 you get listed in their annual report of giving. And let's see, I guess that's what I, again, a lot of, we've been, a lot of discussion, a lot of work on, on equity, which has been great. It's been really wonderful. So that's my report.
Thank you. Are there other groups they need to report out on? People who've attended? All right. Barb, your turn.
When you said I get to talk about the great start, it, I almost forgot that we haven't been together since the start of school. So it has been a great start. I would, I really appreciated being able to make it to most of the curriculum nights for at least part of that time and, and get to hear the teachers talk about what was to come this year. And so such, and it's, it's fun to hear teachers excited, energized, and as experts in their field. And so that combination is always pretty exciting for me. In particular, you know, my heart is in middle school, so it was very fun to hear the middle school teachers talk about middle school kids because there was both the love and the understanding of who they were working with. So I, I very much enjoyed that, of course. So as, as you've mentioned, this week is homecoming week and a fun event that was happening here today was the Passages students hosted a pop-up sale for Zephyrware. Oh, there we go. And it, just the stream of people coming through, and in fact, they had to run, run to the, to Heritage to get more supplies because they were running out. I, I think they've did that multiple times. So, so that was a, a fun event and a fun community event out here. You also mentioned the OHA choir at the Twins game, which I got to attend and see them sing the National Anthem. And then we had more than a section, I want to say almost two sections of families there. Just having, it was a great community event, really, for those, those families that attended. So I want to thank Mr. Pontius for that because it was, you know, it's something he goes out of his way to, to organize and it's on a weekend and it put, I know it's a lot of work for him, so thanks to that. Although I, I can't say I thank him for the recorder that is at my house now because there's, although there's a lot of progress on the hot cross buns, but it, you know, it was a lot of hot cross buns last night, so. So there's that as well. And I do want to highlight that October 2nd is our first community luncheon is coming up. And so, so that's, that's in the near future and community luncheons are for all of us. And so if, if you're able to make it, it's always fun, it's always a fun event. So thanks to Community Ed for putting that together. The last thing I'll mention is that I did have the opportunity to travel to Fargo to meet with a number of districts who are exploring personalized learning as part of their strategic plan as well. One of our action plans has, we have one action plan that is from strategy one that goes into depth about a call for us to really look into how can we create more personalized learning environments for all our students. And these districts who are working on that, I was invited to come and join them and, and the, the power of being able to connect with other districts who have very different contexts than we do, but are also having the same kinds of, how do we change our system to meet the need of every child? And so, so that was something that I, I had an opportunity to do this week and I hoped, and I know I will continue with those. Just so we can all continue to learn together as we move that forward. So I think that's my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the tournament.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.
That's it. We're done.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the tournament.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned.
That's it. We're done.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the tournament.
So moved.